Welcome to the November 2021 meeting of the Planning Commission for the Village of Southampton. So we'll take a short pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, just as it is in the heavens. So we're going to do now a roll call. So we have Pamela Gilmore.
Here.
Laura Devini.
Yeah.
Eduardo Simeone. Okay, Christian Pico.
Here.
Bob Essay.
Here.
Michelangelo Lieberman.
Present.
And Michael Anderson.
Present.
Summer Stelling.
Here.
And Mark Schiffer here. Okay, so we're all here. So tonight we have a very nice, we have two presentations coming up for the Planning Commission. One from regarding the proposed adoption of the New York Stretch Code, which relates to the Energy Code, which is an extension of the new, the latest Energy Code. It was adopted in New York City and the village is considering adopting it also. And the second representation will be from the Sewer Tasks Force, which is headed by Paul Travis. And we will have a presentation from Paul and the engineers. So without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to, I think, the presentation by NYSERDA.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to be here with you. My name is Sheila Piper. Some of you know me. Been a longtime resident of Southampton. My husband and I were out of town because he became a minister. We were itinerating for 15 years, but in 2018 he retired and we are back and are gradually getting quite involved in some village issues. And one of the things that I've been undertaking is to look at the situation in regards to climate and how the village is addressing the climate crisis. And so back in May, myself and a few other people were instrumental in having the village board, the Board of Trustees, adopt a Climate Emergency Resolution, which I hope as a Planning Commission you've all seen. I know it's been sent to you. And that resolution calls for the Village of Southampton, as really the whole world should be called, to become 100% carbon neutral, as they say, by 2030. It may seem like an idealistic goal, but it is actually doable and it is something that we as a, and the resolution also allowed or called for a Climate Action Committee to help move this through the process. We are a committee that makes recommendations. Our mission statement was passed in September finally, and it constituted us as a committee of five people. Myself, Michelangelo Lieberman, Robin Brown as the trustee representative on the committee, Scott Rose and Alexandra Colby are the five members at the moment. And we had our first official meeting, although we've been talking about things for quite a while, but our first official meeting was at the end of October, October 28th. So tonight we want to talk to you or bring a presentation to you really from the experts. The New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, commonly referred to by the acronym NYSERDA, is the agency that oversees something called the New York State Stretch Code. And as Mark alluded to, this is a code that, it's a model code that villages around the state are adopting that will increase energy efficiency by 10%. It's also, so it's great in and of itself and it's the easiest thing in the world to do. You just say, we're going to do it. And it's written in a very user-friendly way. The building department is on board and it's something that will automatically start saving 10% of energy. However, it also is part of the Clean Energy Community Program that New York State runs. And it is considered one of their high-impact actions. So by adopting this, we're, I'm doing two things. It's a great action in and of itself. It's also a step on the road to paving the way for future actions and becoming part of the Clean Energy Community. And we will be talking to you more about that in the future.
I'm going to just speak for a moment as well, if that's okay, Sheila. So currently our building department, when they're looking at an application, they are using the New York State Building Code to inform, you know, how homes should be built. This NYSERDA Energy Code is a supplement to that and therefore involuntary. So municipalities have the opportunity to adopt it if they'd like. And what NYSERDA has done is come up with the Clean Energy Community Program and is incentivizing municipalities to do so with grants. Small communities receive $5,000, large communities up to the town would receive $50,000. But otherwise Sheila covered it pretty well. And we have with us Andrew Manett with Malloy College, who is a technical expert in this department. And I think he also will be able to speak to some of the larger questions and kind of give us a brief overview of what we can expect and the differences between the current New York State Building Code and what this supplement document provides. Andrew, are you with us?
Thank you very much. I'm going to listen to Andrew too.
Yes, hi, I'm here. Yes, my name is Andrew Manett. I work with the Sustainability Institute at Malloy College. And we are contracted with NYSERDA to provide coordinating services under the Clean Energy Communities Program. So that means I am, I am the Clean Energy Communities Coordinator for the Village of Southampton. So that means I can offer you advice, encouragement, technical assistance with adopting any of the high-impact actions that NYSERDA has identified as, as part of the Clean Energy Communities Program. And I can give you an overview about that program if you'd like. Or we can dive into, to talking about the New York Stretch Energy Code.
Andrew, why don't you give us a brief overview of the Clean Energy Community Program? Just so we understand the comprehensive approach that NYSERDA is taking? And then feel free to dive into NYSERDA, excuse me, the Stretch Code as well.
Sure. Okay, well, what, the Clean Energy Communities Program is a program that NYSERDA established to encourage local governments around the state to take specific concrete actions that will lower their greenhouse gas emissions from their operations and from their community more generally, potentially save tax dollars by lowering the energy bills and create, foster a green economy in the state by, by providing, by providing, you know, by providing a boost to these industries that supply these sort of things. There are 10 broad categories of high-impact actions. Adopting the Stretch Code is one of them. Each of these act, if you adopt four separate actions, if you complete them, submit them to NYSERDA, you are designated as a Clean Energy Community. You get that recognition and you also get a designation grant of $5,000. There are a couple of high-impact actions that they really want to encourage communities to do. So they have attached what they call action grants to those actions. New York Stretch is one of them. So as, as Mike said, you, if you adopt New York Stretch, if you're a community under 40,000 residents, you get a $5,000 grant just for doing that. If you're over 40,000, you get a $50,000 grant for doing that. And beyond those grants, every action has a number of points that are associated with it. So when you adopt that action, you get, you get those points. And there are tiers of points where you get increasing grants. So the first tier is, is 3,000 points. So when you accumulate 3,000 points, you get a point-based grant and so on. There's tiers of 4,000 and 5,000 as well. And those are much heavier lifts because, you know, some of these actions are, are more, more difficult to take than others. They, they do actually entail some, some work, some, some expense sometimes. But in the long run, they, they make your community more sustainable, more energy efficient and, and save in the long run, I think. So that is a brief overview of the Clean Energy Communities Program. New York Stretch is, as has been noted, one of the high-impact actions that you can take in the Clean Energy Communities Program. Essentially what it is, it's an overlay to the existing state Energy Code. It makes certain, certain things in that code more stringent. So if, for example, the, the state Energy Code requires a certain U-value for windows, the Stretch Code might require a higher standard in that category. So basically what it, it's, it's attempting to look ahead into the future and create a model code that is about one code cycle more advanced than the current state code. Approximately, it's every three years, the International Code Council brings out a new code and it generally improves the efficiency required of buildings by, you know, a few percent every year. So NYSERDA looked at the, the rate that, that the Energy Code was becoming more stringent, saw that if it kept going at that rate, we would not reach the, the necessary efficiency we need to meet state goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and said, we have to speed up this adoption of, of energy performance standards. So they said, okay, what would it look like if we made the, made a model code that's, that's, as I said, about one cycle more efficient, about three years in the future? What would that look like? And they, they went through all the work to promulgate this code, to write the code language, do it in a way that makes it very easy for a town or village to adopt the code in total and not have to reinvent the wheel in every, in every town and village that wants to have a higher standard for the buildings that are being built.
I have a, I have a couple of questions. I was wondering, how many jurisdictions so far have adopted the New York Stretch Code?
Um, I will double check on that, but it is a few throughout New York State. I believe two large and I think as many as seven small communities. So I believe that is the case. It might be more. I can double check very quickly.
The town is currently in the process of reviewing it. They may adopt it. I can't speak to the elected officials, but a notice of public hearing is on for the 23rd. And we'd be, a large community, East Hampton's also looking at adopting it. They'd be a small community. So there's some, it speaks volume if we're all kind of in the same, if one's a builder, a stakeholder in this community, they want to see codes that also mirror one another rather than vary quite differently. So there's something to be said for that.
Well, I heard that the New York Stretch Code has very stringent requirements about the roofing insulation requirements that would require, for example, that every roof rafter be 12 inches and then you couldn't have, you could no longer have 10-inch roof rafters.
That's the maximum you can go. Because if you look at the chart, when you go from zero to 12 is where you gain your most, both savings. After that, it's almost a flat line till you get to about six feet or something like that. And triple-pane glass is the way to go. I've done that in my house. I've done that. I've replaced my boiler with a 98% efficiency gas boiler, which is the size of a suitcase. Because when I started, we used to move boilers and it took four men to move.
Yeah, I double-checked. It looks like 18 small communities and two large communities have, have been awarded grants for adopting the Stretch Code. So it's not, not a large number yet, but it's, it's a significant and growing number. I don't believe any of those are on Long Island as of yet. I would like to point out that the town of Southampton is, is moving forward seriously on adopting the Stretch Code. So if the village adopted it, that would make them kind of more coherent with the surrounding town. And there wouldn't be different rules in the town and the village when, say, a builder who works in your region, you know, crosses the village line, they wouldn't have to learn, you know, use different rules. So there's a, there's a value to that, I think.
Could you speak to the rooftop note that Mark just brought our attention to?
I, you know, I'm not familiar exactly with the, I can, I can pull up the doc.
Yeah, I think the R-value that's required under the New York Stretch Code for the roof is like in the 60s.
I had to do snowmelt. I built my house with six inches.
Was this referring to the, the roof, the roof insulation values?
Yes.
Say again, Andrew?
Was, was this referring, I didn't hear exactly what was being said. Was, was this referring to the roof insulation values?
Yeah, I understand that the issue is the, on roofs, in order to achieve the Stretch Code requirements, you need to have at least 12 inches of insulation. So it means that the roof rafters would have to all be at least 12 inches. So you couldn't put the roof rafters at about 10 inches or.
No, you couldn't have a cathedral ceiling.
Well.
But if you went with foam, and it depends on the type of foam. If you order a high-density foam, you could do it.
The ceiling R-value doesn't seem to me to be different in the Stretch Code from the base energy conservation code. They both say R49 on this document. Let me see if there's a, I'm looking at the wrong place on the.
You know, the other thing, as mentioned, I went with solar panels in my house. And at the time, New York State gave me seven, no, the federal government gave me 7,000. New York State gave me 3,000. The total cost was 24,000, so it cost me 14,000 to put the solar panels. Now my electric bill has been cut down to nothing. And I just, I think that's another way we should push because our utility costs are very high here.
Yeah.
So what I'm looking at this document is, is the comparison. They've, they've picked out the things where the value is different. This, this is residential. And if you can see, ceiling R-value, it's R49 in both. For cathedral ceilings, it looks as though there is a difference, that there's a more restrictive value of R38 for cathedral ceilings.
So is it the lower the R-value, the more energy efficient it needs to be?
No, the, the higher the R-value.
Higher, okay.
R is backwards from you. You, the lower is, is more stringent, the R, the higher is more stringent.
What it is, you have a outside air film, you have the material, then you have insulation, you have the sheet rock and you have the inside. There are R-factors. When you total them up, you come up with a U-factor and that's what you use to multiply your heat load or heat loss.
Got it.
So, so it looks like attic insulation is, is not more stringent under the, so.
I want to get too in the weeds with this code. I think it's a, it's a good introduction to perhaps the village taking a step towards being, modifying the code to be more environmentally conscious. You know, we are a coastal community and often we're faced with a lot of sea level rise issues that's due with what's going on on a macro scale. And then the question is, well, what can we do about it? And a lot of it has to do with our built environment. If we are building more efficient buildings that have less carbon, that's not contributing to the problem. And as one of the wealthiest communities in the country, you know, we have the opportunity to be a leader in that. And so I thought this is a great way to kind of put this in front of the Planning Commission.
One thing I want to mention, before I retired, the town of Southampton had a new Energy Code coming up. They, everybody went to it. Now they pressure test the houses when you finish them. And it's got to meet a certain pressure that, my son just did a house a couple of years ago and he had to pressure test it. And of course it passed Bonn Cull's. But the problem, he also had to put in, he had to put some type of fresh air intake. I forgot, if you don't do it, I forgot what happens to the house. It's like in refrigeration, your insulation eventually get, eventually will absorb water and become waterlogged and eventually rot out. There also will happen the same thing if you over-insulate a house. And I forgot the term. Mark, you might.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
I can't remember the term they referred to it.
Yeah.
Right, there are concerns. One of, one of the big things about making houses more efficient is you air-seal them more tightly. You, you eliminate leaks. What that does is it increases the need for proper ventilation. And if you're not ventilating properly, you can get moisture building up and things like that. So if you, if you are building a house tighter, if you are making a house more energy efficient, you do have to be careful to make sure that you are, are providing proper ventilation in the house.
Quick question, Andrew. Being that this is quite a technical document, what's the best way you could possibly recommend that we can familiarize ourselves with it as well as, I mean, are there specific talking points that you could point out? Some of the bigger differences for the residential portion and perhaps also as well as with the commercial?
Yeah, I mean, it really is a lot of little slight improvements. It's not that much that's any one thing that's a dramatic difference. I do have this comparison document that I could send you to, to look over. I also have a cost comparison document that.
Right, because we save money over time.
You know, how much more it costs to build a house to this standard? And also what the, the payback, how, how fast that investment is recouped in, in energy saves.
Another question I have is whether NYSERDA has also training for building officials to train the staff at the building department? Such that they can, when they look at the drawings or look at the plans that they'll submit it, to make sure that they actually meet the, the new code?
Yes, yes. NYSERDA does provide free training for, for, for building inspectors and other code enforcement officials. So that training updates them on what's required in the new Energy Code. It also provides them with the continuing education credits that they're required to, to maintain. So that is something that is available. I, you know, I would like to point out that it was mentioned that, that the town of Southampton does have a requirement for an energy rating, which involves the blower door test to, to see how, how the house performs as far as its airtightness. That, that under the Stretch Code is one potential path for, for meeting the, the standards of the code. In, in several towns on Long Island, it was mandated. Southampton's not the only one. There's, there's 10 now, I think, that, that require that. It's something that we recommend because it does two things. First, it provides actual empirical evidence that the house was not just planned to be energy efficient, but that it actually will perform. And, and second, it takes the, the job of, of verifying energy performance off the backs of the, of the municipal building inspector and gives it to a certified third party who specializes in that. So that the, the building department or the building inspector can, can focus on the other things that they have to work on of, you know, safety and fire and electrical and, and things like that.
Has Tim looked at this?
Yeah, yes, I should, we had a discussion with Tim.
Uh huh. And what did he say?
Well, he says, if we, if we adopt it, if the village adopts it, then he's absolutely willing to.
The town adopts it. He said, the town's adopting it, he probably want to mirror the town's language. So what the village currently does is, the, the town has HERS standards that's codified. The village has a permit process that has put HERS standards in the permit process. And what Andrew has mentioned, if the HERS standards don't work out, for whatever reason, there are other ways. Whereas currently, like for the town, it's HERS standards only.
And are they adopted by the town?
We're in the process of, of doing that.
Okay, and when is the end date on that?
Well, November 23rd is a notice of public hearing. If all goes well, I guess a notice of adoption would be December 14th.
Yeah, okay.
But, so the Stretch Code has four passes to compliance. So if one doesn't work out such as HERS, but in this case it'd be ERI, you would prescriptive or the other two.
I got you. So maybe, maybe we'll see what the town adopts. And it might be a little less technical than this.
Well, so the plus side of a village, often because they don't have more stringent codes, they can just adopt a code in its entirety and it simplifies the process. So a builder or someone who's an applicant would just review the Stretch Code in its entirety. The town, because it had HERS codified it, we, we had to tweak it. We had to play with it. But again, as Andrew and I have spoken about this on a separate occasion, there might be a benefit to just following the town's lead because then if you're a builder out here, you, you don't have to look at two different codes. You're looking at one.
It would simplify it.
Well, that's, that's basically a positive, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be a positive.
Definitely a positive.
There's one thing I want to throw, everybody's familiar with Fowlinghams. Do you look at their ceiling?
No, I like all the truffies out there. Are you kidding me?
Well, so this doesn't.
That's a historic building. How do you?
So historic buildings are one, they would not be included in this. And two, this is for buildings that are being improved. So we don't go after people having, having a building.
Yeah, no, it's for new construction and renovations.
You could, and I don't know if you can do it, Mark, you'll have to ask me. Underneath the asphalt shingles, put insulation and you keep the inside clean. Is that possible to do?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's possible.
That's one way to take care of historic. But I didn't know if that was.
Historic buildings, they have a waiver process for it. NYSERDA recognizes that.
Well, could we review the, the NYSERDA plan in front of the town that they're going to adopt? Is it this?
Yeah, it's that as well as their own codes. But I can bring a copy of that code to the next meeting.
Okay.
And, you know, we can review that and, and look at this. And you're all welcome to look at this document online to familiarize yourself with it. I know it looks technical, but you kind of begin to understand it.
You see the language as well.
Yeah, the U-factors and R-factors, as someone who's a layperson, not a builder, yes, that does not, I never understand what I'm looking at. But for some of the appendices, like for instance, Appendix CC, right? And I'll just quickly read this briefly. You know, it says, "New building shall comply." This is for commercial buildings. "New building shall comply with at least one of the following. An additional onsite renewable energy in accordance with a certain section. Electric energy monitoring in accordance with a certain section." So it kind of, it, electric vehicle charging station. So you have to have one of these things, one of these features, and then you comply. So they list out five. So it's giving applicants and builders a way to make things better, but not to, to a point where.
But one of those things as per this code.
Yes, so Section CC 102.2.
So you can't have, you know, Joe, Joe homeowner, you know, installing something.
Well, but so, just so we're all also on the same page, this doesn't add an additional burden to the, the building department. Currently, building departments refer to a HERS raider, which is a separate entity, third party. And they say, okay, this is, this complies. They get a check. They go to the building department, the building department is cool. If they, if Stretch Code, HERS raiders would be still doing the same thing. So they would say, Appendix CC is met, check. And I guess the building department, building inspector, Tim, is just like, great, you've reached, you've met our standards. So it's not like there's an additional workload here. It's all kind of streamlined. But please take a look at this document, you know, have questions. We bring him, bring back Andrew, we can look at the town's code and we could all discuss this at a later, at a later date. We don't want to consume the entire meeting.
Well, it'd be nice to be able to read that on a truncated form. I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if I can do that.
We'd like to also invite all the builders who work locally.
Please, yeah.
To absolutely comment on this and, you know, what is their estimate of the additional costs that will be tacked on a construct, on a new construction?
And if I can just say, Andrew said he can send a document that shows that.
Yes, exactly.
Right, I can, yeah. And NYSERDA did, did research, they, you know, they, on, you know, typical kinds of buildings that would be built. And they compared what it would cost to do it under the, the base code, what it would cost to do it under the new Stretch Code. And, and then, you know, how much more it would cost and how much energy it would save. And so how much it would, how long it would take to recoup that additional upfront cost. And after that, you're just saving money. I can, I can send that document to you. They, they did them for both residential and for commercial buildings. So, and they, you know, the, the payback is different for. Um, so, uh, and they, you know, the, the payback is different for different types of buildings. I re, I think for the residential, it was in the seven or eight year payback period. So for a house that's going to last, uh, you know, for maybe 50 years before you do a major change to its, uh, you know, envelope or, uh, or heating system, uh, it's certainly, certainly worth the investment. Um, also, you know, you realize if you're talking about, uh, a, a goal of being carbon neutral, uh, whether it's by, you know, 2030 or, you know, 2050, which is, is the state's goal, building buildings now that are going to last for decades that aren't as efficient as they could be, seems not to be the, the way to reach that, uh, that goal.
Right. I think it's a very timely discussion. I think, you know, the, I think NYSERDA did a phenomenal, uh, job in putting this together. I think it's being reviewed by a lot of jurisdictions right now and we're, we're doing it. We're doing our duties to review it also. I was just recently at, uh, a conference from the New York State Professional Engineers in Saratoga Springs and at there we had a lot of discussion about it. A lot of engineers were for it, a lot of engineers felt it tacked on an, uh, uh, of, uh, an additional burden on the costs. But I, here being in Southampton, I think it's definitely worth reviewing it and, uh, that's what we're doing and I want to thank you very much, uh, Andrew.
Well, I can, I can certainly send you, uh, copies of, of the, this documentation along with, um, an adoption guide and some, uh, um, some, NYSERDA has also put together some, uh, model language for a resolution to adopt it. Uh, so they really are kind of making it as simple as possible for, for you to, to move forward if you decide to.
Andrew, if I may, are there any, uh, question? Are there any incentives for builders or homeowners to, uh, to do this, um, remodeling, if you will, or whatever it might be? Any rebates that the state gives the homeowner or the builders to install all these different features?
Well, no, because it, this is, you know, just, it's the code. They have to build it to the code. Um, if you're talking about, uh, renovating an existing house, uh, you know, uh, PSEG has some, uh, rebates and things for various, uh, energy saving, uh, items. Um, but, uh, yeah, no, if you're building a new house, you kind of have to build it to code so they don't bother giving you an incentive to build it to the code.
Well, thank you, Andrew. Well, I think we'll have to bring him back and ask some more questions, uh, if that's okay with everyone.
The state, the state doesn't give any rebates on any tax or anything else on that. You update your.
It shouldn't. It's a building.
Shouldn't it should? Okay.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
All right, so I want to thank you very much, Andrew and.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, Andrew, please, uh, circulate that information.
We, and we will provide it.
Yeah.
And you will.
Okay, we have now another presentation from the, uh, the sewer task force. Cat, is, is Paul Travis on?
Uh, Jolie, can you get Paul Travis on the screen?
Paul Travis is in.
Yeah, can you get him on the screen?
I believe that he's on the screen. Uh, hold on one second.
All right, if he will unmute.
If you unmute Paul and start speaking, I believe that you're going to.
Okay.
Unmute.
Perfect.
You all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can hear you.
So, uh, first of all.
Oh, Paul, you, you, you hit mute again. Can you unmute? Thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank everyone for inviting us to, uh, speak tonight about where we are on the plans for a, um, waste water treatment district and plant in the villages of Southampton. Um, obviously, as I know as well, a topic that's been important to the planning commission for many years really came out of the planning commission years ago. Um, so very pleased to talk about it. Um, and very timely in the midst of the comprehensive plan, um, being discussed, which obviously, um, talks about a lot of these issues. So, uh, Adriana Restrepo is with me tonight from DNB Engineering. Um, and I'm going to have her go through some of the work we've been doing. I think, um, I think everyone here knows our timeframe is to, um, have a proposed map and plan, uh, ready in the spring. Um, and, um, we've been, uh, we've been fortunate enough to, uh, receive a grant from the town's, um, CPF fund for the work that we're doing. Um, and we look forward with partnering with the town and the county and the state as we move forward. This is an issue that obviously has been front and center for the county for a while. Um, is being addressed, um, in West Hampton. The town currently has project underway in Hampton Bays. Um, East Hampton is in the midst of, of working on a sewer district. So this is something that I think all of the villages on the east end are, um, grappling with. So, um, a good deal of work has been done over the years. Um, much of it under the aegis of the, uh, planning commission. We've been able to, to take advantage of that work. So with that, I'm going to let Adriana run through what we've been doing and then, uh, we can have a conversation afterwards.
Thank you.
Adriana, you can unmute.
Okay. Um, so, good evening, everybody. Um, thank you for having me here today. Um, I just want to go briefly about what we have done this far. Um, so originally, we, um, review all the, uh, work that has been done in the past. Um, so to make sure that we were, um, reviewing past information, that we were not, uh, missing, um, any, any work that was previously done and also making sure that, um, the future requirements were covered as well. So the first part that we did was to confirm the boundaries. Um, so let me, let me share what we have.
If I may, can you please maybe just also introduce a little bit your firm, DNB Engineers?
Sorry?
She, he wants you to introduce your firm.
Oh, DNB Engineers and Architects. My name is Adriana Restrepo.
That's good.
So let me share my screen.
Show me some introduction.
So, um, let me make this smaller. So we're looking, um, you're familiar with the area. We're looking at the bottom. Here's basically Lake Agawam and this is the downtown area of the village of Southampton. Um, so the red outline, uh, is the boundary for, for the district. Um, so it includes, um, about 250 parcels and they're mainly located in the, uh, commercial area or mixed commercial. Um, so the first, the first part that we did, um, was to really go over these parcels, understand what the current use of the, of each of the parcels was and determine the flow by using, um, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, um, you know, basis for, for the determination of the flow and, um, then moving on to projected flows. Um, before moving to the projected flows, we had a walkthrough, um, the area to understand what part of the, um, vision plan and the, um, future development of this area was really, um, more important and was going to be realized. So, um, we walked this area and basically identified where, um, additional residential, you know, um, units were going to be added to mixed commercial, uh, where more restaurants were, um, intended, um, in some of this, uh, on some of the streets, um, including the area on Nodden Street, um, and, um, and Woodville, Woodville Lane. Um, so after that, uh, we proceeded to, um, identify what collection system was, uh, more appropriate for the topography and, um, what will serve better this area. So we started by looking at gravity systems and, um, where, um, you know, did a conceptual design of, of what the, um, of what the process was using those, the flows and using the, you know, the outline of the, of the boundaries. Um, and most of these lines were located, um, in the back of the properties, knowing that this, the systems, sewage disposal systems were in the back of these parcels. Um, so when possible, we run, um, you know, the pipes through there. Um, obviously, this is, like I said, this is a conceptual design just for the purpose of planning. So there are no, um, surveys done at this point or utility information, uh, that is included, uh, in the investigation. Um, but we did use, um, you know, the topography. We use, um, you know, visuals and aerials to, uh, to do this run through the, through the system, um, and found that, you know, there was a possibility of doing a, a gravity system with one pump station, so, which is, which is pretty good. Um, some of the, some of the pipes are, uh, getting a little deep and obviously, like I said, uh, not having the utility information, having detailed information on connections, this is just, uh, conceptual design. Um, the next step was to have a consideration about treatment. Um, so, uh, originally, there was an idea of probably, uh, splitting some of the flow, sending some of the flow to the, um, to the Southampton, um, hospital, um, treatment plant. Um, and, you know, we went through the reports that were done before. We went through, uh, the information that was collected as far as, uh, the status of the equipment and the technology, uh, size of the building. And we did a walkthrough, um, the facility and, um, and, you know, the considerations as far as, as far as the amount of flow that could be accepted. So at this point, um, we have an average flow, future predictive flow of approximately 200,000 gallons per day for this area and a peak flow of approximately 320,000 gallons per day. The capacity of the, um, of the Southampton, uh, hospital plant, um, is about, um, is 105 is the permitted flow to the plant, 105,000. Uh, but approximately 40,000 are being used currently. Um, so basically there were, you know, the offer was to use, um, 60,000. The, um, the plant, um, is located about a mile east, uh, of this area. Um, approximately, yeah, that's, that's about here. Um, and, and, you know, there were several, you know, several issues with, with the plant, um, for, um, for the increase of, uh, of the size, uh, requirements and setbacks that, uh, the county, um, could request in, in the case of an upgrade, um, splitting of the flow, uh, the need to still have, uh, an additional plant to treat the rest of the flow. Um, considerations about maintenance and doubling the logistics, uh, of having two plants. Um, so several options were looked at, um, as far as siding the plant. Um, the latest option that, um, it's been, um, you know, it's been worked out currently is having, uh, or using, um, sites, a site north of the, of the district. Um, currently, uh, we're looking at three parcels in this area. Um, area wise, um, and the, you know, the setbacks, uh, topography, the, the conditions of the soil, um, groundwater elevation in this area, all of those considerations are , uh, appropriate. Um, it is a little far from the center of the, of the, um, of the project. Um, you know, it's about, you know, the N at the north e, edge of it. Um, however, it, it seems to be offering most of the, um, most of the requirements at this point. Um, so we are proceeding with, um, uh, completing a, um, recommendations report. Uh, following this report, we will summarize it, summarize it in an engineer report that will have, um, a template that is, uh, used in, um, funding, um, with, um, like, you know, for example, the EFC, which, um, some, you know, the, the project is currently listed as a multi-year project. So as the project advances, this will be updated and information will be updated as far as estimating the schedules, um, and alike, and obviously an engineer report submitted. Uh, following the engineer report, we will be, uh, completing a map and plan. Uh, we already got assessment values for all the properties and are working on, on, on getting what we, you know, what we estimate to be the debt service for each of the parcels. So, um, this is more or less what we have done this far and what's still left to do. Um, if you have any questions, um, you know, feel free, so.
Yeah, let me maybe, if I could add one or two items. One is that I, as I think some of you know, we, um, we're including, um, town hall and the elementary school as part of the, um, district and that really reflects our partnership with the town. And, um, secondly, um, right now, we're looking at the possibility of a pump station in the, uh, very underutilized parking lot of the Verizon building on Woodville Lane. Um, so with that, if there are questions or comments, that would be great.
Oh, yeah, great, uh, really, I'm pleased to see such a great study and so much progress that you did. Really, I want to thank very much the, the, you know, the sewer task force for putting together this effort. Uh, one question I have is, uh, and will the, as the county, the Department of Public Works, uh, been in touch? Have you been in touch with the Department of Public Works to see how much there could
I had a little trouble hearing, but if I understand what you're asking. So I think just, um, you know, I should mention that Gary Golese has been a member of our task force, um, and has been working along with us. Uh, has been an enormous, uh, resource for us. Um, as I think you saw when, um, Adriana was going through the plan, um, you know, we've been working with him on the concept of putting the lines through the parking lot, um, both in back of Main Street and Joe's Lane and also in back, in back of the property on Joe, on, um, on the east side of Main Street, um, and on Hampton Road. So tho, those really represent his input. Um, one of the issues that has come up, uh, several times, and I know is a priority for the trustees is seeing, and I think an issue that's been raised before the planning commission, is seeing if we can use this opportunity to also bury the phone and utility lines in the village center, um, while we're going to be doing obviously significant amount of work tearing up parking lots and in some cases, streets.
Right. The, what I was, Paul, uh, what I was mentioning was the, the county Department of Public Works that operates right now, uh, most of the sewage treatment plants in the county.
Right.
Has the county been in touch? Have you been in touch with the county yet or no, not yet?
The county's aware of what we're doing. Um, and, um, you know, when we have a draft report, they'll be getting a copy of it and I, I assume they'll have many comments on it. I mean, one of the things that the DNB Engineering has been doing for us is, uh, guiding us on what the requirements of the county are likely to be in terms of setbacks and other issues that they care about. Um, so we are following their advice.
So it's like the man something, so, you know, this is one of the first things that we did when we were, uh, going through the process. So we were taking, um, the, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services standards as well as the New York State and, uh, the, uh, Department of Public Works, um, as, you know, the future reviewers for the, uh, for the plans. Um, so we're following that for the, uh, for the new flow calculations. We're following that for the siding of the treatment. that for the siding of the treatment plant. We follow following that for the technology that they prefer for for the plant. Um and so we we and we're very familiar with the with the process. We have been in front of the um sewer agency um multiple times explaining how we completed our the process of calculating flows. So this is this is just something that we that we do um, you know, normally. So.
A- also for the operation of the plant, maybe the county could operate the plant. Cause I'm not sure the village is really equipped to operate the plant.
So so yeah, so i- in that case, we're we're selecting uh you know, right now, we have in the plan, we have two two different alternatives for technologies for the plant, and both technologies are uh the county is very familiar with them. So that's one of the things that kind of um uh guide us to guided us through selecting those as well, easy to to operate, easy to maintain, and very common in in the county. Um so and um the you know, the the county is aware of of this project. You know, originally, I had a separate conversation with with Boris from from the sewer agency, and um he 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 knows of uh you know, the the sites that have been considered, the uh the uh the extension of the boundaries. So he he's he's pretty familiar with with the project since he's been um there've been several reports completed uh this far.
Yeah. Um Paul, this is uh Christian Pico. Hi, good good to see you, Paul. Um and thank you for for this presentation. And and I just want to understand um what you said in terms of deadline uh to have basically a, I think I understood D N B produce a final report by the spring meeting, March of twenty twenty-two. I was curious as to the other issues that go around it, and I'm not sure I understand where the responsibilities start and stop for D N B when it comes to issues around financing, this capital expenditure, fiscal issues, operational issues, which uh Mark Schiffer was just speaking about just a second ago. In other words, you know, who will pay for it, um how will pay for it, and who will operate it? I I just want to understand the process. What happens uh after D N B is done? Or is it part of D N B's work?
Well, I I mean, I think the first task of the ones you that you listed, which is really very appropriate uh question, because we're really at that point, is now that we have a basic uh handle on what the the district and its flows are, and um some of the ideas about how a plant would lay out is um D D N B will now be uh giving us some figures about what the likely cost could be. Um and that will begin the phase of then looking at um what the fin- financing options are. I mean, I think one of the things we understood, we did a lot of work early on, um talking to both the town, um to the C P F Fund, to um the village of West Hampton, which obviously has a lot of recent experience, and also um you know, understanding the money that's available from the state, putting aside whatever becomes available under the infrastructure plan. Um you know, I think, Christian, my reaction would be it's going to be less about capital costs, because a good part of that, if West Hampton's our guide, will be covered by grants and loans, and it's going to be much more about the operating costs and how those are split up among the users. And so um I think we'll have some idea of that we um when the report's finished, but then really, you know, as we get into more engineering and I think also public comment um and input from the trustees about, you know, how we want to look at financing and particularly financing the a- annual operating costs.
Okay, well, really, I thank you very much, Paul, and to task the sewer task uh committee. I think it's a was a great presentation, and you know, we look forward to seeing you more progress on it. And uh you know, please keep up the good work.
Is there anything interim um like um is there anything interim posted on the website of like, you know, what's what what you're looking at now and like the maps that she just showed and things like that? Are those available on the website, Paul?
I'm sorry, I had a little trouble hearing.
The the question was actually a very good question, Laura. Thank you for asking. It's whether this information is available on the website, like the maps that were introduced tonight, whether they can be posted on the website for everybody to to.
Yeah, I just I'm yeah, the maps certainly could be um po- posted at this point. That's a really excellent idea. Um so we'll make sure that happens.
But keeping in mind that this is very much work in progress, that is work in progress that maybe.
Well, and that should be noted, but you know.
Yes, I mean, we leave it up to Paul Paul Travis's judgment to see whether it's appropriate to post it at this time.
No, but it's um it's it's good to see something in progress.
Yes.
Paul, Paul Michael Anderson, I have a quick question. Hi, and thank you. Um you had mentioned briefly about utilities and the underground utilities possibly putting uh electric lines, telephone lines underground. Have you spoken to anybody at Light Club or at the local company?
Yeah. No, this is purely a concept at this point, but obviously, that would be the next step, and that's something we would work on with Gary Gillespie at D P W.
Cause I I think that Michael could definitely be part of that effort.
Terrific.
Yes, I think.
That'd be great.
Well, the planning commission is is, you know, we've been tasked with trying to get this done also, or at least contact people to try to get it done. Maybe we put it to face and try to uh work together and try to get this done.
Yeah. I mean, I think, Michael, the thought is that, you know, this is a great opportunity because the you know, when we proceed with the sewer infrastructure, you're going to be doing work in the streets, and rather than having the streets closed twice, doing it all at once, I I think is a really great idea. And I don't know if, you know, I'm sure some of you have been in West Hampton since the work that was done there. And you know, it really, there's a significant, there's been a significant improvement in the public infrastructure in that village center.
Yes.
That's good to know.
Okay, great. Thank you so, so much.
Would they also include, I mean, if you're going to drop lines, would they also include um installing L E D lights on the streetlight as part of that?
It's a different.
That's a different.
I know it's different. I know it's different. But I mean, they kind of.
But it's not the utility that we, I think, own our own L E D lights, so we can just make that decision.
Well, it might be it might be pertinent to do it at the same time.
I think our village is.
We we have dark skies legislation that was also adopted, and um there's specific requirements for streetlights, and Gary Gillespie is very aware of them. And as they need to be replaced, they have to do it according to the dark sky.
Right, because right now, the the lights.
That's a particular.
I'm I'm sure it is.
Handle power and L E Ds.
I'm sure it is.
All the energy saving things. I don't have that at my fingertips, but.
How many have been replaced? A lot.
The town's not, they were played, Paul.
The village has replaced the lot.
Well, I just want to I just I just want to thank Paul and the N B engineers for their presentation.
Thank you.
And you know, and to be to be continued. Okay, thank you again.
That's forward to the progress.
Thank you. So uh so we're right.
Paul, I I've got one question. I'm a little concerned about grant money from the state concerning the physical, uh should say, the economic conditions of the country right now, you know, where there's going to be any grant money at all. Because coming out of pandemic, businesses were closed down, sales tax and income tax all dropped. I was affected, and I know a lot of other people are affected.
Well, we're hoping for Build Back Better.
Huh?
We're hoping for Build Back Better.
Yeah, Build Back Better, that's right.
Just for the sake of time, let's let's move.
Yes, let's move on. And then so I think that in terms of uh, is there any other points that anybody on the planning commission would like to discuss?
There's one thing that I brought up many years ago in the planning commission, expanding the village borders. The village expanded the borders three times. The first time, they went from Old Town Road all the way out to I think it was Flying Point Road.
Flying Point Road, yes.
The second time, they went from Pulsey Neck Road to Road D. The third time, they went from Road D to the inlet.
Then there was a fourth time.
What was the fourth? I didn't know.
The fourth time was around Bishop's Pond, wasn't it?
That's where I'd like to go. I'd like to go right up to the college.
Okay, that's a that's something to definitely look into. Yes.
Yeah. The other thing, Paul, is I'd like to take over the south side of thirty-nine, so the county, so this town can't wreck County Road thirty-nine like they like they have. We have some control of what they do on that road.
Borders.
Yes.
It's a highly business district. It's.
Yes.
I don't know what we want it to look like.
Okay.
Mark, I did have a couple of points for me.
So go ahead.
Yeah. So first of all, we had the uh village um the village comprehensive master plan workshop that was held October twenty-seventh. Um certainly want to thank B F J that did a great job to animate this, and I know a lot of us listened to it, and we can thank some of the community residents, some of them who participated, which was great. Um and during one of the work session, I worked with one of the trustees who brought up an issue of multifamily housing. We had a discussion before this meeting with this trustee, and uh we'll I think we'll look forward to maybe have a work session on that discussion.
Who's the trustee?
The trustee McGlocklin.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Um and and but someone on the commission should champion this with the chair, co-chairs. Uh it's not going to be me, because I'm working with the building department. I'll get to that in a minute. So I'll leave the co-chairs to think about that in the group.
All right.
And then the other thing is I am meeting with the building inspector uh as with a work session on Monday um for a discussion at last planning commission meeting. And I'm still waiting for you, Mark.
Yes.
To give me some talking points.
Yes.
Um so that's Monday, ten A M. Um but I just wanted to inform the planning commission that that's work is working on it and and uh and sort of wanted to update everyone.
We have invited the the new chief building inspector to come at our next session in December to make a presentation about what are what what his vision is of the change that should be made uh in the master plan in connection with any zoning rules, process, application process, and and the building code enforcement and and regulations. So we look forward to this presentation. I'd like to also, I think that there is some training that I think I we emailed you.
Can I just, can I inter- interject, please, for tasks assignment of planning commission members? Pam and Summer and I are working on senior services within the village.
Okay, that's great.
Um yes, especially after the B F J presentation about the census twenty twenty, um it seems that there's a large portion of the village population that could be classified as seniors. I understand that there's a a state level or a fed level of sixty years and above, but the fifty-five to seventy-five bracket is quite large in the village. And this is something that's been neglected in this village in particular. The town does a very good job. They have four sites that they that they operate. Pamela and I and Summer um want to start sort of a pilot program um that would act more like a senior club rather than going full bore, senior building, senior services center, blah, blah. We want to see, you know, what we can build on. And Pamela, you want to go ahead and say something?
Well, it's really, really precarious, because the place that we would like to start this little club, see how it is accepted, would be the Veterans Hall. Now, because it is unused. Now, I know that at least for another ten years, but we thought we could speak to Bob, who would Bob Grisnik, who would in turn speak to his people. And you know, you only get an answer if he asks. And it wouldn't be a big thing, um but we don't think it would. But.
Well, not beginning.
Because we're not turning, we're not asking it to be a center or anything like that. But you know, there's an awful lot of people.
Yes.
Just sitting in their houses. I mean, the pandemic effectively killed half of them anyway, because it's just a loneliness, uh you know.
And what about the cultural center?
Well, the Veterans Hall is half of that building. We do, Pamela and I are also thinking uh down the road with that built that whole building in mind. We wanted to start with this little section. And just of note, most of the veterans are seniors themselves. So this would not exclude them. This would automatically include them in this sort of club that we would have, maybe meet once a week. We call it a little tea party. Um we have to work out, obviously, we have to work out logistics, transportation and stuff. There would be no lunch or dinner. There there might be, we would ask maybe local restaurants or the Food Institute at the college to provide some sort of.
No, I think it's a great.
You know, whatever, um hors d'oeuvres or whatever. And um.
I think if we could maybe enlarge the the and ask the public to be more involved, or anybody else who would like to be involved, create a committee.
Well, we are going to do that. We are working on that right now. We have enlisted Judy Johnson, who has been working about this ci- uh this particular portion of the population for years. And she is going to be our advisory, and we're going to put together a committee that will actually spearhead this. And the budget currently, the current budget has a thousand dollars designated allocated for senior services, uh which is not a great deal of money, uh especially when you compare it to the budget at large. Um but anyway, we would like the planning commission to back us on this project.
Yeah, absolutely.
And um there's one other thing.
We need to also keep in mind like the the planning portion of this, you know, if this organization, like, are we going and contemplating land use in respect of senior, or is it really just?
We're starting out with a pilot program, Michael.
I'm just just.
No, no, no.
Not understanding.
Yeah, no, no. And we'll I I've talked to the people at the uh senior center in Lisdwire, and just off the cuff, we were speaking, and she said that if your pilot is successful, that she would feel, she's an employee of the town, by the way, she would feel comfortable in going to higher-ups, county, state, bed, to enlarge it, especially in funding.
I think it's a great, great idea.
There's another procedural thing I'd just like to bring up about the planning commission itself. When we decide to move forward on an idea or something like that, and can we have a a vote that's for the record?
Sure.
Yeah, of course.
So that it is for the record.
Yeah.
So I'm not going out there and talk to Bob. I'm not saying that, though, I'm not saying.
Yeah.
Yes, so so I I will.
Make a motion.
I I'd like to make a motion then, that the planning commission would like to not only support, but uh encourage the also the for the some committee.
Senior club.
For, well, yeah, for Pam and Laura and Summer to spearhead a a committee, to be able to contact Bob Grisnik or whoever else they have they should contact to be able to develop this program for seniors within the village.
Second.
And encourage, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great idea.
I think we should do that for all things.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, great. You know, absolutely. I thank you, and it's a great thing. We could make a and well, we could also formalize the motion for Michael to to spearhead the efforts on behalf of the planning commission, to be able to contact the utilities and start the discussions to uh bring whatever they can underground. That would be great in the within the village business center. We would certainly welcome if they could really study it or start to at least make some proposals or come up.
I'll second that as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very.
Since we're actually in this.
I'll also, I mean, just as an aside, I'd love um input. You know, if y'all have have some ideas about this sort of senior club.
Yeah.
And locations and how it's structured, I mean, just email us with your ideas. I'd love to have them.
Maybe add a bridge, a bridge component, a bridge.
Well, no, we're going to do games.
Yes.
More a bridge. I can't remember the game my grandmother plays, but I, since we're in the spirit of making, yeah, majo, thank you. Making a, making a motion. So perhaps also the, the planning commission would make a motion to uh pursue a New York stretch code.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to do that, as would anyone second that.
A motion to.
Pursue New York stretch code.
Yeah, to pursue, yeah, I think that we should, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission pursues the New York stretch code to, with the possible adoption. But I, I think at this time it's really to really study it more, invite public participation from builders, from architects, from engineers.
No, well, we don't, we don't adopt.
We don't adopt.
Learning about it and then perhaps we'll.
Yeah, but it's important that we have a, have a united voice. I mean, we have a voice.
That, that we want to pursue this avenue of adoption of the.
So we bring Andrew back here, we learn more about it, we take it up as an action. Yeah.
So you made the motion.
I second.
I'll say, you'll second.
Aye.
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, fantastic. So I think that I sent also a little email about everybody's training coming up on October sixteenth.
I second.
Where, where is it?
November sixteen.
Where is it?
It's uh, there is some training, you know, I'll make sure, please look at your emails.
Is that the B F J with Taylor Young or no, separate?
No, 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 separate.
Oh, they just put out, B F J just sent me one for the sixteenth of November as well at four o'clock.
No, this one is from the Suffolk County Village Official Association.
Okay.
I think all the boards are doing it.
Okay.
So all the boards are doing it.
And it, it will be him person at a place?
This, I'm not sure. You know what, why don't you review the email?
Okay. Well, I looked at your email, but, but you haven't got it done yet, right?
Yeah.
Well, I want to ask, they don't send that out in emails when they have the meetings anymore, because I don't get it on my phone anymore.
You have to update your email.
I did, I went to the, I went into the.
We'll call you, we'll call you tomorrow to update your email.
Okay.
I don't think we do. I investigated.
You didn't get it, I was there. I'll check it, Madison. I'll check it, Madison.
Secretary. Mark, I received it.
You received it? You got it, got it. All right, so I just would like, now it's uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting. Anybody wants to second that?
I'm going to stay.
No, I'm seconding, I'm sure.